Hello, everyone. My name is Suzie Ratzavong, and I serve as Vice President of the Board. As you can see, our President Jim Lee is not here, so I'll be serving in his stead. So, welcome to the November workshop meeting of the Springfield Township Board of Commissioners. Today is November 10, 2025. As you heard, I'll be serving in Jim's stead. Other than Jim, we have a full slate of Commissioners here today. How many Zoom attendees do we have? Well, welcome on Zoom. Hello, and thanks for joining us. And thank you all for being here today. I want to, of course, acknowledge Andy Freeman here, who's our Solicitor, for those who don't know. And our engineer, Tim Woodrow, will be doing his engineer report shortly. Before we begin, what matters are people in the audience here for today that you haven't already told me about. I'm aware of Cromwell and Mermaid Parking. Are there any other issues or concerns related to the agenda that folks would like to discuss? Okay. Times two on Cromwell. Anything else? I do have you also for Cromwell.
Suzie, I don't know if I can finish before I just walk into Burton Road.
Burton. Beautiful. We will, for those of you who have not been here before, we will typically begin with our engineer's report. Then we will tackle any remaining public comment. Then we will proceed through our agenda. And for those who are going to be speaking, whether it's during the engineer's report or after, please be sure you come forward to the mic and speak, and we'll remind you at that time. Just because it's the Veteran Holiday tomorrow, I just wanted to quickly acknowledge that it is Veterans' Day tomorrow. We send our regards to all our service members and their families, those who serve and have served. And I'd also like to recognize and send a happy birthday to the United States Marine Corps, who is celebrating their 250th birthday this year. They were founded on 10 November, 1775, in Tunnan Tavern, here in Philadelphia. And a reminder that Township Building is closed tomorrow. My husband's a Marine, and he said I needed to say that if I wanted to come home tonight. So, all those words to say. We're going to start with Mr. Woodrow and the engineer's report. And please be patient while we work right through this. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not a lot to report this evening, maybe a bit of update. If you'll recall, last week, maybe the week before, there were some traffic issues on Woolly Grove Avenue, the construction of Windmore Manor, the townhouses doing some roadwork and some barricades. And it was pretty tense there for a couple of days. Have to report those barricades are down. Curb is in, sidewalk is paved, sidewalk is reopened. So, it's looking pretty good out there on Woolly Grove Avenue. We've also been working in conjunction with PennDOT, PICO, and Aqua to get that road mill and overlayed. You saw that there were a number of trenches cut in Woolly Grove for water and gas service. So, working with those folks, they would really like to get that work done sooner rather than later, certainly before Thanksgiving is their goal. Trying to coordinate the different contractors and subcontractors is really not a township obligation. It's a PennDOT roadway, but we've been trying to coordinate those conversations between PennDOT and PICO and their subcontractors. And hopefully, that will happen sooner rather than later. So, stay tuned. Hopefully, get that paved and get that all cleaned up for everybody.
Question, please. Yeah. Are current cuts on Woolly Grove, like handicap access for the sidewalk, are there responsibility of PennDOT or, you know, property owners that are adjacent to the road?
Probably property owners that are adjacent to the road, yes. Yeah, there's some work that the developer needs to do at that crosswalk on Woolly Grove, adjacent to those townhouses. But that's kind of underway and in process. So, he's got some responsibility there. If it's outside of the scope of his work, it's the homeowner at that point. Great. Cisco Park and our pedestrian bridge. Yahoo. And we've got all the survey we've needed. Passing information along to our York Timber Bridge, bridge contractors. Recall, we worked with them last summer, talked about some options, talked about some span lengths. They really were asking for some more accurate information on the existing bridge before we could price up a new one. So, hopefully, within the next couple of weeks, we'll have some information back on that price to replace that pedestrian bridge and talk about them finding a funding source to make that replacement. But I think the first task was to get a good, hard budget number for that bridge replacement. So, that's coming along. Just a little bit of follow-up on our Walnut Avenue walking trail and Phase Two of that walking trail. Recall that we've been trying to find a way to link our Walnut Lane Trail through to the townhouses and then into Upper Dublin. We've got good information from DEP, from SEPTA, from the PUC. And we've really been struggling with who at PennDOT to talk to about getting permissions to cross some PennDOT property with our trail to make that connection. Our traffic engineer, Casey Moore, helped me with a contact with someone who's a little more elevated over at the department. And so, we've been trading emails over the last week or so. We think we maybe have finally found the right people to talk to. And, you know, hopefully, knock on wood, they will be willing to meet us out there. And we can show them the location of the trail and really that, in our perception anyway, an absence of any adverse impacts to that PennDOT property by our trail construction. They're thinking we can do it by way of an access easement agreement. So, we have an easement over their land for a public walking trail. And so, probably need to include Andy in those conversations if they go any further. But hopefully, that next step is a site meeting with the PennDOT representatives and trying to get that all wrapped up. I think that's all I had to report this month, barring any Commissioner questions.
Just two things. The current bridge.
In Cisco? In Cisco.
Cisco Park. It's sound and safe. People can still use it.
Yeah. My understanding, Pete, the conversation started with the narrowness of that bridge. And, you know, on busy, you know, community days, people can't pass. The approaches are pretty steep. And so, that if you wanted to get some kind of handicap accessibility, you know, it was difficult to get up those ramps. And so, and it is getting, you know, kind of to the end of its lifespan, I think. It certainly looks sound. I don't think anything's structurally wrong with it. But if there were an opportunity to find some money, that is correct.
Do we have, during the bridge? How old is the bridge? Or the bridge has to be?
Well over thirty years old.
Yeah.
And it was kind of, you know, it's a homemade, homemade bridge. I'd say homemade, that's a good.
Young age.
Yeah, right. Right, John, what the heck, thirty?
Utility poles. Yeah, exactly.
A local bridge.
Exactly.
But the company that you're talking about, the York?
York Timber Bridge, yes.
So, does that imply that we were thinking about another wooden bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
And I should, I'll send you guys their website. I've done a couple of bridges, you know, in the recent years with this company. They're out of Florida. But they build like golf cart and pedestrian and vehicular bridges all over the country. And you can go from a very simple product to something that is really knocked out. You know, cover bridges and, you know, what kinds of different architectural details. So, you know, we have some options. But again, I think this is something we need to bid out. I don't think we can have an exclusive contractor. But it gives us an idea of kind of a price range. If we can get a style that we would like, we could certainly get some better pricing together.
So, Tim, that could be another location for my bridge.
It could be.
Because, again, they don't want to take that bridge very far.
No.
And so, you could say to the county, we got two locations. And what I was thinking, and I was thinking this more from a grand standpoint, I don't know if this is attractive for funding or not, but because that field is utilized for sports and got the bid, an ambulance had to get up there at the field to get something. You know, they could get there now by going through.
Yeah, through the school, yeah.
But it certainly would be pretty cool or pretty, a nice feature if they could easily, the hard line, go across, you know, Green Brick, whatever it is. But having a vehicle accessible bridge there to provide use, that helps with funding.
Yeah. These were looking, yeah. My county infrastructure guy said he was getting back to me, but he hasn't.
And that's been months.
Yeah. And I don't, I don't know that they've got immediate plans to remove that bridge, you know, near term anyway, Jonathan.
But in the interim, and again, this is not our problem, it's way worse. But because that hanging cord is no longer there, got hit by a truck. Trucks now, all the time now, get to that bar.
Yeah.
And mostly they're Amazon trucks, delivery trucks. And then they're forced to somehow do a six-point turn.
Get out of there. I know when I go into that, be my duck. I mean, I'm driving my car.
I wish that they kind of gave a little bit more.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll reach out again tomorrow, for sure.
On my lawyer well-worn issues, any update on the trail?
We last heard, Mike, that they were, this is down on, with the, yeah, Stan. Yeah. No. We did reach out. When we got the PennDOT permit for the upgrade of the walkway, we reached back to the county. And the county people said, oh, you know, we're ready to go. We're going to bid it this fall. But I've not seen anything come out of the county on that.
They just keep us in the loop and let us know when it gets let forbid. And we haven't heard. So, we assume that it hasn't been let forbid yet.
But there are people working in the county.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Both of them is the head of their trails unit.
Do we have any other questions for our engineer, Mr. Woodrow? All right.
Great, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming.
Absolutely.
All right. Now, we're going to move into the matters we just took on. I presently have two items on Cromwell, Mermaid Parking and Burton. So, we're going to start with Cromwell, if that's all right. I think that will be quick. Mr. Rooney, and I don't know your name, but feel free to come over here and speak on the matter. Just, I'll ask Mike to give us the short on what happened first, and then you can speak more to it.
Yeah, well, Suzie, we spoke earlier today. Suzie, let me know that you had reached out to her and had some concerns with some students from LaSalle College High School speeding through the neighborhood. I, in turn, reached out to a couple of people that we made contacts with at LaSalle in the past. They escalated that up to the dean of students. And I understand you went over and you met with somebody over at the school as well. Could have been the dean of students or vice principal. There's a couple of them.
Yeah, dean.
They were able to identify the student. They spoke with the student. They spoke with the student's parents as well. So, they did what they could do on their end.
Correct.
In response to your concerns.
Correct.
Suzie said that you would potentially be coming out to the meeting tonight as well, so.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's a definitely nice segue. And they have been great. And part of what we have to say today is, LaSalle has been very responsive, especially with an incident last month. We live on Cromwell Road and wanted to share some ongoing safety concerns that we have.
Will we, I'm sorry, Suzie.
Oh, yes.
But for the record and for your name, and you don't have to give us your exact address.
Yeah. Cromwell Road. Matt Rooney, my wife Chloe Austin, residence on Cromwell Road. And just share some safety concerns that everything those just mentioned regarding some students cutting through, speeding, driving recklessly through the neighborhood, particularly during morning drop-off and school dismissal, obviously. For context, we've called both LaSalle and the police multiple times over the past few school years. This year, we went to the police in person as a proactive approach at the end of August. As school was getting in session, started noticing it happening again right out of the gate in hopes to find a solution. We met directly with Officer Gross. While he conducted a speed test, came out, acknowledged our concerns. He alluded to the idea that we think that the drivers are going faster than they actually are, noted that the officers can only enforce the speeds 10 miles per hour over the speed limit. I get that's standard within PA. And mentioned that the police shift change at 7:00 AM makes enforcement during this with, this window difficult. We found this both deeply concerning and as our primary focus and should also be the townships, the safety and well-being of our community and our children. Last month, we had an incident on October 16th. My wife Chloe was driving our nine-month-old daughter home from daycare when she was nearly sideswiped by a LaSalle student who ran the stop sign at Delphine and Cromwell, cut her off dangerously, dangerously close to T-boning her on the side that our infant daughter was in the car. Frightening experience, obviously. And unfortunately, not the first one we've seen over the years. After the incident, to that accord, she went to the school in person and shared her concerns with Vice Principal James Fike. He was receptive, helpful, addressing part of the situation internally and implementing additional education to promote safe driving at the school. He recommended contacting the police, noting that enforcement becomes challenging once the students leave campus. He also encouraged us to convey the same message to law enforcement and expressed his support for ticketing the students, which he has asked for in the past and has very much encouraged them to do so. Today, we're here at this board meeting to voice our concerns publicly because this has become a persistent safety problem for our family and some of the other young families that have moved into the neighborhood where the kids play in the streets. Major concern during those rush hour times in the morning and in the afternoon. Definitely in the summer, we notice a huge difference in the neighborhood as a whole. It has a whole different feel to it when the school is not in session. And it's very apparent. While we're here, plea for action, attention, before something actually serious happens.
And I would, my name's Chloe again, and I'm Matt's wife. And I would just like to really stress this is persistent. We've lived here since summer of 2021. So, you know, we've noted this every year. Like my husband said, when school's in session two times a day, this isn't we woke up one day or that one instance of me getting almost sideswiped. This is every day during the school year. And it's scary out there. I mean, aside from humans, pets, we make sure cats inside. No one's safe. And unfortunately, you know, aside from going to the school, to police, I'm receptive of even like speaking to a student, kind of saying something if I'm out walking. And unfortunately, there's a lot of hooliganism. They're just, and I don't want to say everybody, but it's been unfortunate what we've been met with. And aside from what we eyewitness, there's ring footage. It's just really persistent.
Oh, thank you. If you, if you wouldn't mind coming to the mic to speak, people on the cameras just can't hear you. And if you have a separate adjacent matter, if they don't mind, we can sort of blend Cromwell together.
My name's Eric Clark. I'm also a resident of Cromwell. And we have several other Cromwell residents here as well. I've been on Cromwell since 2018, so even before these guys. And I will definitely echo the sentiment and concern around the safety, the speed by which the students are coming through the block. They're coming off of Paper Mill Road with a full head of steam. So, by the time they get halfway through Cromwell, they're 20, 25 miles over the speed limit. So, that means they're doing like 50, right? Which is extremely dangerous. My wife and I, also, we go walk out early in the morning to get exercise. We're constantly given the slowdown. Sort of signal to people, they, you know, they disregard it. I just think more strict enforcement needs to be put in place. I think, unfortunately, to resolve it is when folks start getting tickets and they have to pay those tickets, right? To kind of drive the appropriate behavior, just like we all as residents have to obey the speed limits and such in the township.
Is it just in the morning?
It's in the morning and the afternoon.
Oh, and the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, like 7:15 to 8:00, and then like 2:30 to
3:30.
3:30, something like that.
And to give you an idea of our block, we live on one end and Eric lives further down the other. So, like he said, they really gain speed as they go. We witnessed them coming in hot from Paper Mill. He witnesses them going out hot towards LaSalle. And at least in the morning, it's kind of silly. They sit in the traffic to get into the school. So, you know, for what? You just end up sitting in the, I pass them when I'm going to daycare. And, yeah, I would actually say the timeframe is like 6:45 to, yeah, as early. Yeah. And it's just as bad. And also, it gets worse throughout the year. I think, you know, say you're a senior in high school, you're graduating, the less you care. We've literally witnessed them like honking horns, weaving in and out at the end of the school year. Just, I guess, happy to be done with school, but we're not happy.
Excuse me, students not, parents not?
Yes. It's very apparent, once you've lived in the neighborhood, for its students. Yeah. They're identifiable. And again, you see them in the traffic.
In the summer, it's non-existent. And it's, it is like a completely noticeably different neighborhood in the summer. And to echo Eric's point, we joke, we're usually on the same walking schedule. I like, I purposely change it during the school year. Like, I'm not going to walk my daughter out there or my dog out there. I'll avoid those times of the day, like, just to be out there. And to give you even further context, like, this is out of character for us to even be at a board meeting. So, I think it's, at least for us personally, the fact that we're here expressing it, we are generally concerned. And now, having a young family, it's the last thing I want to see happen, anything on the street, because I know how society can operate a little reactive. So, we're here trying to be proactive to make sure that community is safe, the neighborhood feels how it felt when we moved in and just, yeah. During, ironically, during the summer, yeah. But appreciate it.
And to add, there are newer families on the block too with very small children, more than we probably have seen in the last five or six years. There's more little ones in the neighborhood out in the woods with their parents and things of that nature. So, we have a sort of an uptick in younger ones on the street right now.
Well, thank you for coming. Appreciate you coming and advocating for the neighborhood. Obviously, I think this is first time for folks here also hearing it, although we know we've been working with LaSalle and engaging with the staff to ensure, and we know, to repeat what Mike said earlier, there was at least an interdiction of that student.
Yeah.
And that's, that's a helpful start.
It's probably helpful if you get license plates.
Well, hard to get a license plate at 50.
Yeah. And then, when I was driving, I mean, my infant's in the car. I gave a visual.
What are the regulations around cameras and stationary cameras, temporary cameras, that can photograph license plates? Do we have anything?
I mean, we have the license plate readers on cars. And they have fixed license plate reader. They generally don't capture speed. They just capture tag, tag information and whether there's warrants on the owner of the car, whether it's expired.
If we had a general time and we could capture license plates, I mean, that might be something we could report to the school and say, hey, these, these, here are your offenders.
The good news is, we kind of have a timeframe for when this occurs most frequently. The bad news is, as Officer Gross said, it occurs during the shift change. What we might have to do is talk to the Chief of Police about altering, you know, temporarily either the shift change or holding some officers over to try and do some targeted enforcement. So.
And just a final note there to
The afternoon should be okay, though, because that's not a shift change.
Correct. There's, there's been a couple of times where we have seen officers on the block. And it's a noticeable difference, obviously, the day of and, and the preceding days. The pendulum starts to swing back. What was a little extra concerning the beginning of this year, after we proactively came, and he came out to the house to run the speed test to give the visual with the stopwatch and the lines and everything, which we were appreciative of, while him and another officer are parked outside of our house, clearly marked vehicles, clearly marked police officers, couple of kids come steamrolling by. And he's got to flag them down and let them know, you guys really have to slow down. But it was like, even, even with them there, it just, it felt like the kids are just so used to. And, yeah, and it's, I mean, he almost like hit them. And he gave them a warning, see you later. But speaking to the admin at LaSalle, they've been very receptive. Personally reached out. They personally, I think, even maybe revoked the parking pass to the one kid. And we've noticed the major difference on how he drives through the neighborhood now.
I've seen him.
I've seen, yeah.
He looked good.
Yeah. And not to mention, they already shouldn't be cutting through the neighborhood. So, they're already not supposed to go through the neighborhood, plus driving recklessly. It's just been kind of an exhausting resident to deal with.
Well, thank you for bringing it to our attention and being an advocate for your neighborhood. Did you have something additional, Eric, that was different than that topic?
Yes. So, my name's Eric Clark. I'm on Cromwell as well since 2018. Recently, there was a property, residential property that was sold at 1302 Cromwell that has been brought to our attention will be converted into a group-style resident.
Eric, just because that's not on the agenda at this moment, would you mind tabling, just until we get to the agenda items and they'll come right back around? It should just be another 15 minutes. If you wouldn't mind, I appreciate it.
I mean, it probably would take that.
Okay, go ahead.
Explain what you can and can't do in a single-family neighborhood.
Just wanted to be courteous to
What, when you say it's going to be a group home?
It's for, so I think it's going to be designed to accommodate folks with disabilities. We have one of these properties on our, on our street already. That property proceeded, you know, when I moved in. I have noticed over the years, you know, from that particular property, additional noise, traffic, disturbances, lack of upkeep, things of that nature. We have a similar concern with this new property that's, that's being established. So, we feel as though as residents, we're not, we're not zoning experts, but there was no sort of like notification. We're not sure what, if any, variances have been applied for to just, you know, kind of like get this in place. I spoke to James Lee probably about three weeks ago. He did mention that there was like a federal sort of, you know, mandate that I guess you can't legislate against. I don't understand that necessarily. But we feel as though as residents, right? This is something that will impact us, you know, directly for the reasons that I, that I highlighted. And we have concerns over it because there had, we have experience from a similar property on, on the block. So, what we're here to find out is what, if any, actions we can take if we want to voice our concerns about this and not, you know, just like a plug-and-play in our neighborhood, right? Where no one has no say in what's going on here.
Mike, do you want to give the rundown of what is permitted?[1651.53]
Yeah, so in the single family residential neighborhoods, you can have no more than five unrelated people living together.
Yes.
As a a single housekeeping unit, that which means they have to kinda live together, eat together. Cook their meals together, wash their clothes together, just like a family normally would. Um, typically, and and there's other group homes um throughout the township. That are operated in a similar manner, usually they have some form of disability. Um, there was one on Hole Drive, I remember um a few years ago, we actually had to change our um. The text of our zoning code to accommodate it under the law, um, Jim referred you to the, I think it was the federal um.
American with Disabilities Act, but Fair Housing Act.
Fair Housing Act, um, we we limited it to four and there was court case apparently, it said you have to. Increase it to five, um, so we did, um, so as long as the facility or the the home is operated under those conditions, there's not a whole lot we can do. To forbid it or prohibit it. Um, some of the issues that you talked about, you know, if there's property maintenance issues that come up, those things we can handle through the code enforcement department. Um, but we can't outright prohibit a group home.
Okay, uh, let me ask you this, what what if there are additional concerns about. Items around. The the actual or the company that is operating this facility, because there, there is some documented. Legal filings uh that indicate, you know, some things that have to do with. Uh, you know, neglect, understaffing. You know, other sort of things that can further impact. How this will impact us, right? Um, you know, they're already like. Extending and ripping out a driveway, I don't know how many like vehicles are gonna be in there, like. It just seems like a lot for a community. That already has something like this on it, on its street already. And then the other part is like. For future state, what does that look like in terms of like, if another house goes up for sale? This could be like a continuous and ongoing thing. And it, you know, we're looking for, like. As a residential neighborhood, what what voice do we have in that, quite frankly?
And Mike, to your description, can can staff be there? Like, can you have change, you can have change of staff coming in and out?
Yeah, and they and they oftentimes do.
I would imagine it'd be not different.
Yeah, these are twenty-four hour operations and they have shift changes and things of that nature.
Do the homes have to file a license with the county?
No, no.
I just thought a question.
I have to tell Tina you're not, if they make any changes to it.
I just had a question about the regulations you had been touching on, is there anything about the proximity of two of these homes or just strictly? Hmm, the amount, okay. Uh, if you'd like to speak on the topic, please come to the mic, or we can bring the mic to you, whatever makes sense.
You know. Research and what concerns me, not just.
Ma'am, just need your name and general area.
I'm Doris Schneider, I live on Cromwell, and I've lived there for twenty-one years. So the La Salle thing I'm familiar with, but. What I used to do, I used to call the police, they come, they put the strips. It gets a little better, but it has never been resolved, never. So the uh. The group home. I don't think is a good company, because what I read. They're embezzled Medicare in New Jersey for over two million dollars, and I have the papers I can share with you. So. And because they were short of staff, they weren't supervising, so it's not just us. It's the people that they take care of. Plus, you're supposed to be notified with a group home. We never heard anything, we're the ones that live right around that house, not a peep. So.
What makes you think you were supposed to be notified?
Well, according, according to the law, they're supposed to notify their neighbors. When they open up a group home.
Who who's law?
Our laws.
Pennsylvania, the state of Pennsylvania.
Yeah, yes.
Cuz we don't, do we have a requirement?
We are, we are not.
Have they opened up the home yet?
Well, they're working on it.
They're working. Right.
They're working on it.
Before they, it's in time, I don't know the company, I don't know the law that you're speaking of, I, but. I'll assume for the the moment that you're correct. Um, they will probably do that when they're ready to open up and occupy the dwelling.
Well, I'm concerned about the kind of people that are coming in and managing that group home. With that reputation, they can't do it in New Jersey anymore, now they do it here.
License these people, so we can't really control, but the state of Pennsylvania probably licenses them. You know, so I think the complaint, the the people you should be complaining to if you think it's a bad operator. Is the state of Pennsylvania licensed for, I don't know, like group homes or something, you know, there must be.
Attorney general's.
You know. We 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 don't, we can't control them because we don't license. Uh, well, we can only control them through our ordinance, you know, if you don't cut your grass again. Fourteen cars in your front yard, you know, that kind of stuff. But the state of Pennsylvania, if they're bad, if they're bad operators, then, you know. The state, the state is the one that licenses them.
And we're certainly willing to to help you file, figure out that process to do that. Uh, if that is in fact the case, but, you know.
Well, that is, that is one of the problems, right? We already have a group home and we know what goes on, it's constantly traffic. They have these trucks that beep every time they're back up. People are sleeping six thirty in the morning and you hear that sing, you know, I my friend Rose lives right next to it down the street and it's. It's.
It sounds like we, I think, are digest, again, digesting the problem, trying to figure out what is within our legal right, as you, as you heard. Um, to be sure that we're also being mindful of uh being sure those individuals are able to legally uh. Reside where they are legally allowed to reside, but also perhaps we'll take some time to, as Ed said, identify the channels that might be the best for the individual.
Oh, that's fine, yes.
And also, if there were any other regulations, it sounds like your interest and query is perhaps broader scale. Are group homes allowed to be also in groups, groups of group homes, is that permitted? Um, and I can't say I know the answer to that, but I'm sure we can.
I don't think our current code has a distance restriction.
Right.
Um, and I don't think one would stand up, you know, to any kind of scrutiny based on the federal law that applies here.
And just a reminder.
This is obviously all new information to us, so I think it's helpful. To figure out exactly what's going on on your street.
Yeah.
Um, so we have a better understanding of what actually permitted and what's not permitted based on the information that's given us. Now, and if you have additional information, I guess I would encourage you to share.
Now, another problem is a financial issue, because. If I sell my house, I take very good care of my house, I landscape my yard. And then I have a group home next to me and the people come over, look at my, what is this? Oh, it's a group home, who's gonna buy my house? And if they're by my house, I'm going to get less money for it, that's gonna be a fact.
So I think the path for us to verify for the problem, all avenues for the areas concerning the things, whether it's a financial query or. Uh, activities are uh continually disruptive, continually disruptive, whatever they may be. Certainly, I think that we've got, we've got staff, we've developed that.
Okay, and how how would that be communicated?
Um, well, first, I think I want to give the staff a chance to digest this and spend some time on that. I'm your commissioner for the ward, so I can certainly certainly reach the ward and have to have a sit. Um, Mr. and I can.
Yeah.
Uh, it's already in contact, but certainly I would give that to. And then, uh, for sure, we've certainly left the.
Yeah, okay.
Do you know the person?
Yes.
Oh, I think I asked you, but did you know the operator of the second group is the same? Or is that just an assumption?
We don't know.
We don't know, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, yeah.
And have you ever reached out to the operator of the existing home and said, hey, listen. Can you help us out as neighbors and maybe not have trucks at six thirty in the morning doing deliveries or, you know, can we try to be better neighbors working together? Has there been any communication with them?
Something about this van, the backup van, but it's very true, I live further away from someone than that. And so, I wrote a note, I put it on the car, um, my infant daughter. Uh, it's all allowed, I don't mind a beat, especially when they're emphasizing it, and uh. They're actually looking for the girls to know because they wanted to. So it helps them to advocate speed with companies, I guess you might say, I don't know.
Well, I appreciate all this, I was going to say that we will refer back next month and as the commissioner for the ward alters and. We checked out, so the channel say, no, um, it's not, it's not, it's not, they're not going to do this. So we will. They were for this, they appreciate you and adding the fellows and others. Um, just in the nations of time, I'd like to, if if you just have more in town, to see everyone, if you feel a lot to it, it's probably, and we put that. Thank you very much. Thank you so much, our next type is going to be um, Mermaid, pardon. Mermaid Park.
Maybe people can power it back. They're not moving, I just wanted to go over, it looks like we're putting back the sign pretty much where they were. Is that the point?
Yeah, so the recommendation, um, after speaking with the traffic safety officer and um, the property owner is. To restrict the parking on twelve feet of either side of the driveway in the easterly direction and twenty feet. On either side of the driveways in the westerly direction, which would be the.
That driveway, where the number is on the. That gives off in the driveway, seventy seventeen, forty twenty feet.
So it'd be twenty feet to the left of each side of the driveway.
Correct, but in that, the the number that was going off with the driver, that eighteen seventeen.
So you're saying the driveway width?
The driveway width is not that, the driveway width is not large. This is go, if you look at. On paper, it's one, that four inches. The driveway width.
Okay.
So we're going off of that seventeen and then falling to the. I know that you're twenty feet, but the aprons walk art. It's off the setting to be, it's my first three of time way back where they were. Which is, I would find.
Yeah, the the idea is to pick.
Twenty feet off of the.
The 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 idea is to preserve or create, depending upon how you wanna look at it. At least one parking spot in between the two driveways. And then pick up an additional pa- parking spot where the box is currently painted in front of the park. We're gonna take that away. Take the box away.
The box seems to be. The, I mean, the guy, we found it, we use that box exactly, it's because what it's on is. Well, of what box, we can actually. So like in emergency back park, the only way to handle is maybe go back in there. We need that left side of the park, it goes. And then that exit, that would be times, which seems to be faster than two seven five, it wants to, all that way, it's a little wet. I really don't think. Um, so the these numbers that are on there, I mark without the. So we're looking on foot, but I just wanna make sure that I don't, since the seventeen, I mean, I have. Centered out on the new driveway. One feet off of that one, one feet off the other side. That basically, between the white box and the first. First bit of parking on the top, one feet. After driveway, it's in between next to, but playing with twenty nine feet apart. Then my driveway and then beyond there, actually to this, only to do that, only sign that's left, but not the new, but actually we do those are full. The eight of the private, I mean, the one that me and my neighbors really don't want, it's not a question. But I just wanna make sure this is not, it's like.
It, no, nobody, we're trying to give a, an idea of. I think that, I think the the concern last month that was raised by yourself and your neighbor was, we really need that park, right? Okay, so back to the drawing board, how can we preserve as much parking as possible in the, in that area for you folks? Um, while still making it safe for vehicles exiting, you know, that property, so that's the goal.
Yeah, and I mean, I park this out and it's almost exactly, I know what the sign was in front of my house. Just sitting there. And off of this, it would go off that, that between the.
In feet. Yeah.
And that will actually go off, then there's no spot there. And I know my other neighbors I talked to, they're mapping it to forty nine feet in between.
That's the goal.
And that's the goal, so pretty much just put this off that way.
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay. But that's awesome.
Okay.
Do we have anyone else who's going to speak to the parking matter on your. And if you see someone, my name is your name. Good evening, um, my name is Dan, so I'm staying out of here, I was in my ten year in New York, we just. So I've never seen the. But I think it's here, it's true, it's great, I'm concerned about it. Um, so the one thing I was asking, every second in this space, we can discuss a lot, so I can put two two minutes. But it's not, like, very important for my place, but what my concern is, so if I'm thinking about this, the way it's. Glad it, I guess I've never seen it, is that there is a block between the two. Ends and ends of it. I'm fine with that kind of being. But the parking on the, the. The land is, I guess, what's called.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, where.
Closer towards Queen?
Where the gay is.
The green, the green space.
The green space, closer towards Queen.
Closer towards Queen, we need all of them.
Yeah, they're 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 only twelve feet where the old sign was, that's the furthest it'll go.
Okay, and so you're not taking away.
No, that all stays, there's no reason to, that all stays.
Actually, Peter, for whatever, um, Mermaid, I'm not happy with it, and I. Will be done next month, so here today, just really, really understand that side, but. I wasn't able to decide what these are, any type of. So where, in between the two driveways. There used to be a goal to, uh, have these parts to be free. Are you saying now that's gonna be one car?
No.
That's why I'm still not clear on.
It it.
Between the driveways, what's going.
If if I'm to believe his measurements, it's about forty-nine and a half feet. And if a typical car is about twenty feet in length, you could get at least two in there.
There are two, two on a perfect map of.
Right.
To be careful of those who are not familiar, it's still in the news, for tight lines, for safety, for people, then you have to be careful. The guy that is. So we're just looking for actual design, right?
On Wednesday, you will, you'll have the exact parameters off of.
On Wednesday, they will finalize, that is, if it's confirmed.
We'll do that before then, but that's where we'll get the measurements from the traffic safety officer.
And as a safe, as a separate issue, um. I think last month it was brought up about uh speeding along Mermaid. Uh, and the hazard, and as someone who's there a lot, um, I do see people speed. A lot, um, that turn at Flower Town and Mermaid. Is unless, if you're coming, I guess it's uh easterly on Flower Town and you have to make a left on Mermaid, you have to belly out as far as you can to the right. So that you can see traffic coming, um, I just feel like we should note that. Uh, and figure out what the different opportunities are for safety.
So you're saying that the sight distance, as you make a left off of Flower Town onto Mermaid, is a problem?
It's limited.
Based on, what what is it, is it vegetation, is it?
No, it's just that the 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 street.
The street.
Perv to the right.
Okay.
And in the intersection is like this, so right where you would need to see people coming, the streets perv.
Okay.
Uh, my, I just wanted to elaborate, you know, because we have twenty six years. And I'm feeling this, I don't know what it is, that, you know, there are children, I mean, but. Um, it just, it was, I don't know. I see streets like that, but to elaborate that, it's um. Uh, people going through, it's the little round, uh, stop, buses. And I'd say, you know, something along the same, I mean, it was in some of the places that asked me if I saw the license plate, it says, no, it's that. So, um, I don't know what to do about it, but it was, it's terrible. It was terrible, it was in one, I think, in one of the hundreds, and um, thank you. Yeah, I just want to get rid of that, that was from the hot, and I would hear the bus driver beeping, because people just. Go right past, and or maybe they are trying to, it's the cost I can tell, because it's made for purpose, you know. In fact, I was in a, when I'm driving, I was along the. She's speeding so many, it's funny, like, crazy, it's painful, it's funny, it's not a problem, it's a deal. So it was very scary, that's the only thing you get out. So, it was very scary, that's, that's only thing you get, uh, you don't. Yes, people drive way. Because it's almost a third, but like, you can use it, and help me to sit, you can use it special.
Just been a quick reaction, I, I think she would, might not be there about this topic, you know, we have been such a huge priority. And as I learned, I wasn't one of those, because I thought it, you're not going to do it. That was a big concern of the people that I talked to, on, so there's one that also mentioned, the park there, that people, there is a lot of. It's, it really is, uh, taking advantage of all the pockets in that area, I mean, if you do not have a ballpark there, but it takes, I mean, really seems like, um, everyone I talked to, it's almost just in desperation. That they have, because something's gonna happen eventually, you can almost see it from. Same thing that you're happening, I had a witness on the order of that, and it was, you know, it's hit by a truck, I was going, not good, you gotta, I'll see if you, if you don't, you do not, you know. It was a child, go down, there goes, everything worked out all right, but after, with this, that, it's just, I'm melted. So, I mean, do you just have a box, I think, I don't know what's going on, but you get it, it's all, I thought. But I know that everyone wants to be appreciative, and you can act, it's a kind of, it's a helpless thing, so we'll pick up that, or, and, you know, I think, the whole, you didn't, for, for. Or this up, so, we, 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 some of it, I think people get a.
All that, I know, we've spoken about that particular stretch, most of the place, probably, we're in fact, remind, we talked about what type of striping we could do, that would be within ten dots of regulations. Uh, that I still, I'm tempted to, so, uh, although it doesn't feel, and this is more than a spare, I think, I'm leaving, it just feels, um, the staff has been listening to the topic, and as we all, things is. And some of the discussions, so, so you're not, or, or, of, of, that we have done, we've put.
Yeah, I was gonna say to the, uh, group that came up earlier too, I mean, unfortunately, you come to a meeting every night, or come to a meeting every month, and you're gonna hear about a dozen streets. Throughout the year, and it, and it is tragic, and it is, I think, a confluence of, of a whole bunch of factors that are really making it much, much worse. Um, as GPS takes people down side roads, as people spend too much time on their phones, they get, they're looking at their phone, they're not looking at the street. Um, and you see it on the news, I mean, there are, there are tragedies happening all the time, and, and it's just a general rush that people have, a need to get to places too quick, too fast. Um, and so, um, you know, it, it does not give you any peace of mind, but it is, I mean, I experienced it on my own street, and it is maddening and it's angering. Um, because it does, it does, it seems like just a matter of time until something's gonna happen. Um, and we are a unique township in the same point that, you know, I think a lot of people are cutting through our township to get to three oh nine, to get to different areas. And so, you know, again, there are just those throughways around the township that unfortunately just have that, that traffic pattern.
Uh, just one other, uh, comment about, is comment on the, the strange angle of that intersection. That's where I was, I was in that one, and, um, I don't think a lot.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't go up and around, down, um, town, or to make a triangle, and, and go back. The other things, or sort of, those, those are safety things, and, right, lots of people that are going to the park, um, will come, um, westbound on Merine. These are US days, why, it's hard to, uh, threatening my entrance to a youth facility. So, you've got people suddenly making new times in that public spot, and then they call these, maybe, I mean, those, those, what, so, that's, I'm accident giving. We're due, we're due for a new year, I lived at that intersection for fifty three years, I can trust that, um, I've seen a lot. Well, I guess, thank you all for listening, uh, first of all, for a second, the matter, for those who, uh, were talking about fog, well, they dropped this, uh, it was a matter of long, we had the last month, uh, they started at seven, they come to that, and it's. We got one, also, the thing, uh, doesn't feel expedient, because of the nature of that, we, we, even if they're appreciative. For you, and that we, 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 you know, this, if you do, you can't, I, I believe, going that we'd be a. So if we've been, that matter, it sounds like, you will, and it's the most hurting matter, I want to, I feel. Okay, well, if this all right, everyone, we also tackle a certain road matter.
B, there's a boy.
All right, Mike, if you need anything, to the, to find out, I'm busy.
Sure, so I believe it was in July of this year, uh, Commissioner Cobb mentioned that he had heard from some of his constituents on Burton Road. That, um, they were concerned about speeding on the road, um, pedestrian safety, and, um, he thought that it would be appropriate to do another, um, speed study. Uh, but not necessarily in the summer, because, um, traffic is generally later in the summer, um, people are away on vacations, that type of thing, so. Um, Sergeant Hart, who's our traffic safety officer, he did a traffic study, um, at, during the first week of October, October three through October ten. Um, to determine if, you know, additional enforcement was gonna be warranted on the street. Um, the results of the study, uh, came back with an average speed, uh, of twenty four miles an hour, and posted twenty five mile an hour zone. The fastest speed recorded was forty one miles an hour. Uh, there were four thousand seventy seven vehicles during that time, uh, that were recorded, and, uh, fifty five of them, or one point four percent, were in an enforceable range. Um, earlier tonight, you heard, um, the folks from Cromwell Road talk about the fact that if a vehicle, um, is traveling ten miles an hour or more over the speed limit, that's considered enforceable. Reason for that is local law enforcement officers in Pennsylvania do not have the use of radar, so they have to use timing equipment. The timing equipment is not as precise, so you have to give that cushion, um, before anything will hold up in court. Um, so nevertheless, um, of, of the four thousand or so cars that were, were clocked, there were fifty five that would have received a ticket, um, or one point four percent. So, um, it was his, um, estimation that that would not be a good use of resources, uh, it's among the lowest that we've seen, um, as far as the, uh, the average speed and, um, the number that would be enforceable. Um, and to put that into context, um, we compared that to a two thousand twenty three study that was done in the same exact location. Um, whereby there were, um, four thousand one hundred four cars at that time that were clocked. And there was a hundred and eighty seven enforceable violations at that time, or five percent, still a relatively low number comparative to others. Um, but the speeds have gone down, and the number of, you know, enforceable violations has actually gone down in th- there's two years, uh, so. That's where we are, and then as far as pedestrian safety is concerned, um. Burton Road, like most of Orland, was constructed without sidewalks, so most people have to walk in the street or right along the curb line, and it's recognized that that can feel unsafe at times. Um, the remedy for that is to put in sidewalks, um, but, you know, the, the Pennsylvania First Class Township Code, um, places the responsibility to construct sidewalks back on the property owner. So even if the township were to undertake a project, they would go back and assess the property owners for the sidewalks. We also have run across in the past, um, some people don't want sidewalks in front of their house, they don't want to have maintenance responsibility, they don't want to shovel the snow, uh, they don't want the liability, so. They're not always universally well received, so. That's, I don't have anything more to add.
And then you have, if you can, I, you can.
I, I, Kirk, sorry, we're, um, thank you for, for the work on that, um, I've been hearing from my neighbors, um, I live in Burton, that's with, intersection of Burton, I was, um, I've been hearing about that, and. Um, I recognize that, it's, and seeing like you're going through the best, you know, you're far, you're, on that street, so I guess the perception, um, in terms of, both of the traffic problem, and the, the, and safety. Any, uh, consideration you can give into, um, putting all of your stops, do you ever have, um, surgery, and for, um, when we go away, which is certainly, concerning there, where you have, you know, so, you know, it's.
We, we can ask the traffic safety officer to evaluate it, but absence a, a sight distance condition, um, you can't use stop signs as a speed enforcement tool, so, um, we're gonna be somewhat limited in that regard.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily in terms of the speed issue, but also in terms of the.
Yeah, if, if.
Those are some of the.
Yeah, if, if there's a way to justify it, I'm sure he can, can do that, um, but he's got to work within the, the tools that are given to him. Congratulations, I have a letter come to you.
And one thing I, I would strongly advocate the board to consider, and I brought this up before, um, I, I do think the consideration of adding an additional. Uh, officer, police force dedicated solely to traffic, uh, enforcement, would be, uh, a worthwhile expenditure. Um, and it is nothing that the police department's also asked for us. Um, so, um, you know, barring the use of speed bumps, you know, that, that's a, that's a, that's a board. Um, but I do think hiring an additional traffic safety police officer that is dedicated solely to that piece, and maybe even have hours that are, you know, for the board commiserately. Traffic patterns, uh, it gives, like, very good expenditure for the board to take.
The hours, I know, I. Thank you, and I, I should know, as for the sidewalks, and other, that's, it's, uh, you talk to the path about, you know, these, uh, a second priority, because we're gonna sign them on standards, so, not. You know, not withstanding that we have to get other vertebrates, having that conversation, because that's the, you know, sure that, these people, these units, that, so they can install it and maintain it, just, just those, those people, they just know. Again, not a long topic on us, just, I, uh, figured that, I'm, I'm, it's, 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 it's. Thank you all on, any other, uh, stuff you can bring? And if, if you have another question today, so, I tell you, so Boyle, I want to be sure if you were able to, that, or, you know, so this time as well, um.
Aye.
One, aye, please, this is regarding the recreation center, the asset, uh, it's, playing it here, uh, it's, it's, at the box net, I don't know if it was being booked, unless there's anything on the audio. What's the, you see, have I, and every year, or, or, approximately, the recreation center. Don't feel you have to say, just, as, as.
Thank you.
We know, we know from the clothing, there's a game to it, people are trying to get to.
I mean, there's a game.
Go birds.
Go birds.
Go birds.
Do you want me to just kick this off?
Yeah, I know, I have, uh, I will say, just to start everyone off, that we have, now we should, a very exciting point to optimize, uh, the drafting management, from the help that's, we get to that stage, that there's nothing to. Projects, may not be aware of the, we just started talking, like, through the different projects, there's a piece that's, we're gonna have, a little girl, we're gonna try to play with her, the, 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 the design, or the concept, that has been. Reaching on to the next day is, is, uh. Design, I don't know, the conception of that, I'm staying in, I, 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 I.
Yeah, so, um, MKSD Architects, um, i- is the architectural firm that the board awarded a contract to two months ago, and it's the firm that we've been working with for almost those two full years. Um, about a feasibility study and trying to evaluate the condition of existing facilities that are up there, and is it worth trying to renovate or bring them up to code? Um, as they, they sit there today, um, or do we, is it more cost effective to just start over and, and build something that's purpose built for, um, what we want to use it for? Um, so, as Susie said, uh, very exciting, um, I guess threshold was crossed two months ago when we awarded that contract to MKSD. To take us through the, uh, design development and the construction document phase, um, and as part of that, we had always considered, uh, the hiring of a construction manager to, um, help guide that process. Um, help provide things such as, uh, value engineering, um. Help us out with all the testing that needs to get done, um, navigate some of the nuances of a land development, even though we won't have a full blown land development submission. Um, we're gonna have permits that we have to obtain from the Conservation District, we're gonna have PennDOT issues, we're gonna have utilities that we have to deal with. Um, you're gonna want to do the testing ahead of time, make sure you, you don't run across unsuitable soils, and then you run into a problem when you're ready to construct, and you've got change orders, and it's gonna be really, really costly, so. Um, we don't do this every day, the architects know how to design plans, um, but you need somebody who's an engineer and somebody that can help you actually kind of bring it all together. Um, so, Boyle Construction was working with MKSD on some estimating, uh, for our project, because, you know, we, we didn't want to award a, a contract for something that was gonna be outrageously expensive. Um, our first go around was, um, probably everybody, included everybody's wish list for a rec center, and we, we felt that it was a little too costly. So we brought it down, uh, pretty dramatically in, in terms of cost, um, and design, um, and, and Boyle was helpful in, in helping us out with that, and bringing us to a couple of facilities. Uh, that have been built, uh, that I think we'd be very, very pleased with, um, some of us here took tours of Doylestown Township's, um, facility. And while Boyle wasn't directly involved in that, it's a facility that they're familiar with through their work with MKSD, and, um, you know, they helped get us access to it. So, um, Boyle's given us a proposal to help us out through the pre-construction, uh, phase of this work. Um, and the board's asked to consider awarding a contract to them so that we can get them on board and, uh, try and keep the schedule moving, because that, every month or more that we delay. Uh, the design process, you get another month or more, um, into construction, which doesn't seem to be going down at all, it just, in fact, seems to be going the other way, so. Um, that's where we are, uh, nothing new that the board hasn't already talked about, um, either in broad, it's broad parameters or, um, or not. So, um, if there's any other.
And Mike, you had said in the past that, um, having a project manager for this project was invaluable.
Oh my gosh, yes, I, I don't know how we would have done it without, um, this project. There's just so many things that go on, on a day to day set, uh, basis, that, you know, you, you can't be in control of at all. Um, and, um, we, we actually were a little bit different in, in that project, in that we brought the construction managers in, um, after we had done much of the design. Um, in this particular instance, and what we learned from that process was, it's probably better off to bring them on, uh, right around the design development phase. Uh, because they can help out with some, making some decisions now, before you're already done, uh, that could help save some money as we go forward. That, just, simple stuff, like flooring materials and things, and construction methods that the architects may think makes sense, you know, somebody looking at it from the construction perspective, is gonna look at it and say. Eh, you know what, we could do this a lot more cost effectively if you do this instead, and, and that's when you can make the change, you can't make the change if the design's done and the project's left a bit, so. That's why.
Just with the, you just, uh, you just, the, 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 the.
Yeah, so, um, at this point, you know, we're, we're recommending that we award a contract, um, to keep things moving, um, if you get to a point where you do a bid, um, um. Or you, you let the project forbid to construct the building, um, and, you know, you want to see if there's other options out there for, can, like, somebody to be on site, you're on site, um, construction manager, you can do that, you're not locked in at this point. Um, I think to find, as we work with Boyle folks, um, going forward, that you're gonna want to stick with them, um, there's a lot of municipalities that, um, before they even undertake a project, they call Boyle, and they bring them in right away. Uh, Hatfield Township's one of them, I, you, you've worked with them on their, um, municipal building, and they came in, um, probably right around the design development phase, and when they built their. I call it a water park, it's really their, their swimming ports, they have their aquatic center, um, they brought them in right away, and said, all right, look, we're thinking about doing this, what would you recommend, how would you go about doing it? Um, and so they guided them through that, and Hatfield. Um, and so they guided them through that and Hatfield's just now wrapping up a brand new police station. Uh, and they brought them in very early on in the process as well. So. They've, they've worked, they're working with Tim, our, uh, township engineer, who's going to help us out with our civil engineering right now. Uh, in, um, Lower Providence Township on a project right now, and, um, Tim speaks very highly of them as well. So. Yeah, Tony flew all the way in to, to help us out and to answer any questions.
Well, yeah. I know you've already been, uh, probably involved in something and said.
Well, I'm going to get you, um, I'm actually really excited. Helping the municipal. Maybe this is how we'll help you. These how we're going to do it. I couldn't have said it any better, actually. If you bring this in always, you're basically going to all problems. With all the ways to add and. Make sure that things are done on time, done on budget. And show that each strategy is all in place, you know, with the. Identify alternate areas that, you know, you think the county may not consider. You really want to push the number over a little bit and. Then you do something like for instead of putting in the base day, if they're not. You know, under budget perhaps, and when you end up had something, uh, you don't, yeah. It's connected with. Many times, but just like the Hatfield, although they're, they're a police station. Definitely, uh, the final running jam is an option. Having five or six alternate grid, and the big screen break. And then they, they accept it. They, they accept it, something else in the day, and they just put the big screen in. They haven't really do it. But there's all those strategies that go into making sure that when you put a bid out. The documents are solid, these are due, these are justified, and, and the Hatfield and the town that is. Now, a bid, he gets, like, he just did, um, a couple of hot flows, you need to find where it's. He got fifty bidders.
Oh, my God.
Fifty bidders for five downtown. Absolutely unheard of. But, you know, some of these are best in, in township, so we send you to the best in our work, right? Get the people there, they work with us, and then they're with us. But we'll do that here too. We'll, we'll advocate for you, we'll put the bids out, and we'll, we'll put it solid, and we're going to. And now's a great time, obviously, because you start in August now. We're doing it perfect. We do it. We really, we do it in charge, because like, if instead of taking a C computer, then we can get everything ready. About me, and they send them to you. And they're depending on, lock them this time, make it through the thing down. Perfect time. But that would give you a, when you get sent with, with someone on the time, if you were in the. Someone on the time back to be anywhere. That you were in.
Be done by May.
We won't be done by May, but we'll push the envelope, we give it down.
Yeah, one of the things Tony mentioned was, um, this recruiting of, of quality contractors. Um, they work with the contractors far more than any of us ever do or ever will. Um, they know which ones are really good, which ones you really got to be careful about, um, and. Their value, like, they, they can go out and they can, they can pull people in and say, hey, we got this great project. It's, MKSD is the architect, we're, we're the CN, we've been working with them. Uh, we think you're a good fit for this, you know? Um, and, and they'll be willing to bid on it because you've got a good team assembled.
It hasn't worked like good in terms of low bidding and, and we have to take the lowest bidder or discretion be towards?
Well, you, 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 it's, it's tough to reject a bidder, but we did that actually with. I believe it was the mechanical, um, contractor that did on this project. Um, and we took the second lowest, um, because they, they had trouble completing a couple of jobs, um, in the past.
Yeah, most times we go for it, you are on the. We go for pretty restrictive language in your evaluation, right? We're trying like that, right? So when you feed it a bidder that, um, bids that maybe you want, they need to meet the criteria. And we will put very strict criteria on performance. Past projects, whatever it might be, we'll work with you solicitor to report it in your, they buy it, and so. You know, he will be responsible to you. And then when they come in, and if they come in, we'll digest the business, the bits have, and we'll call it. List reference, we can do financial background check, we do all that stuff. So we recommend to you, we've. Body set with the top two to three, you know, sometimes we'll be doing four, five, six, but they'll go on with it. They will be at least the top three. Sometimes more, they can wonder the, the spread of the, of the, um, thoughts. And they'll ensure that the quality. Qualified and defined, right? It's be responsible of it. The responsibility for it, you got to us, and, and the solicitor ultimately will determine whether we're fine. And we'll make sure of it.
Well, thanks for you. I don't have any sort of time to get into going to hard work about time law and sixty. We freshen the memory of the residents, of the residents of the time I attended, who did that, it's us. You've got a committee of committee, and the authorized for the time science, then a year from now, talk to you earlier, when you're able to. To take them down to the house, they have the reviews, uh, that Eric's by, and topics to follow here, uh, with the gathering within. You've got a three eighteen month of this mission. So it's very, very. That's a client saying that you can look there. Unexciting, but very exciting, you know, and some management doesn't sound that excited, like, we didn't, they said, no, we could be. Assessments, to get a sound, but even looking forward for them. And more interesting that's, uh, picking wall colors and tiles and all those things.
That's exciting.
Well, until now, it's, it makes things like enhancing, um, a, a slow and steady. The slow studies, if I would say, at the committee, uh, trying to do art buildings, to be sure that we looked at the top end of all of the wish lists. As like, sort of things that you really want, um, to what we know is able to, uh, put together. Thank you. Any other questions on the models?
The only question I have for Tony is, um, there's been discussion off and on for many years. About whether or not we should put solar panels o- on this building. I know this is the, uh, a new steel frame building. Uh, has your experience been that, or have you had experience with solar panel installations on? Steel, on new steel frame buildings?
We, we haven't. Can it be done? Yes, it can be done, and a lot of. You have to go into that.
Right.
Before you go. Uh, what it will do though, it will increase the structure, but the, the structure has to support, support the panel.
Right.
But it can be done.
Okay, so at, at what, what, at what junction point would a decision have to be made? By us? You know, to go or no go with the panels? We, we, we're, are we there right now? Okay, okay.
We're not here now. We would take a look at that for when the design development phase, which is really. Once we start, we'll do the schematic design. We're basically here, right? We have it like now.
Yeah.
Schematic design moves a little bit further than you just got, so it'll be the front facade, it'll be some other stuff. Schematic design.
Right.
Once schematic design is done, we then go to the design develop. At that time.
You'd have, you'd have to have an answer, yeah.
And we look at all. Others do too. I mean, we looked at it at lower, um. Lower province, the building that they just bought, unfortunately for them, the building was existing, you know?
Yeah.
Building, about thirty-three thousand square feet, it would be administrative and police. And, and they thought about that long and hard, but, you know, the evaluation component. On that building, not anticipating solar at the time, of course, when it was built.
Yeah.
To now do it, that evaluation process is not something that the patch of them, they don't know that, they may decide we can't. But they don't consider it.
Okay.
But it's something they can say.
How far do you have to drive it?
Not a lot, but you know. We do a lot of work in the front, we have to do. My call.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
It's closer, closer to gym floor.
Backwards.
Thank you. Uh, it's time for us to review the book, so one by one, and then.
Yeah, you already took care of.
Yeah, A, A, B.
A and D. Now you're up to the management report.
Wow, Mike, you're up again.
I'm up again. Um, yeah, first few things are pretty quick. So two thousand twenty-six budget, uh, later tonight, you're going to, um, announce the, uh, the budget or talk a little bit more about it. Um, I'll finish with more time on that. Earned income tax, um, kind of goes hand in hand with the budget. Um, during the month, I was informed that Upper Darby Township, which is one of the few municipalities in the area that does not have an earned income tax. Is going to enact one as part of their twenty twenty-six budget. As a result, we are going to lose approximately twenty-five thousand dollars in earned income tax revenue. From people who live in, uh, Upper Darby Township, but work in Springfield Township. We have a.
So that's the equivalent of about two and a half million dollars worth of wages. So that, how did we determine that?
From the earned income tax collector.
Okay.
Berchheimer has that information. Yeah, us. So, what, Upper Darby? Yeah, no, they do not. And, I mean, we didn't have an earned income tax, it's totally gotten poor. Springfield. The theory being that we're so close to the city of Philadelphia, we weren't going to leave that significant, you know, uh, a return. Over time, that changed. It was worthwhile. First responders, um, picnic, uh, that's going to be on November twenty-fourth at the Orland Fire Company. Seven PM, we have dinner scheduled. Uh, the awards dinner, township annual awards dinner is going to be on Tuesday, December sixteenth. That is going to be at Flower Town Country Club at six thirty. Uh, pension audit, the auditor general was in during the month and they did a five-year pension audit. Usually it's a two to three year period, but because of COVID and staff shortages, they had to do a five-year off period. Um, so they were here for.
Quite a few months.
Two, quite a few weeks. Um, but everything came out clean. They're very pleased with the record keeping. Um, there were no findings, no issues. Um, I gave you the information previously, um, about the funding levels for the, uh. The three plans, um, so you should be commended that you're, um, doing your job and making sure that they're funded properly. Police are at ninety-eight percent, hourly is at ninety-seven percent, and the salary is at about ninety-five percent funded. So. That's good news. Um, risk management, we had our annual risk management or risk control meeting and facility survey on October thirtieth. Um, the township property and liability insurance company, um, sends out a team of people to meet with us. Um, we put names to faces, we go over reporting procedures, claim submittals. Um, trends that, that may have developed over time. Um, we're in good shape for most of that stuff. Um, really no red flags or anything that came up. Um, after the in-person meeting, which is about an hour in length, uh, they'll go out and they'll, um, evaluate our facilities. They took a tour through the police department, uh, in library. Public works facility, um, the Flower Town Country Club and some of our parks. Um, and they'll identify anything from, you know, a loose deckboard, um, you know, to, uh, if they come across. Moisture in the boiler room, then they're saying, you know, hey, you should really get that looked into. Just basically trying, um, to keep us from, you know, having a. So, so it's all worth, worthwhile. The high deductible healthcare plan, we talked about this as part of your October fifteenth budget workshop. Uh, so I put a note out to all of the salaried non-represented employees, um, that it's something that's under consideration. I, I think it's something that is, is a no impact to employees because we're going to fund it as deductible. Um, through a health savings account. And, um, in turn, it'll save you some money, uh, going forward, uh, because of the, the timing, um, dividend. Our health provide, health trust provider is, um, recommending that we plan on an April one, um, start date. Because they recommend ninety-eight for implementation, so they make sure everything gets done properly. Um, it could go quicker, and in which case, you know, we would bump it up by a month or so. Uh, but, uh, we're going to have a, a lunch and learn presentation from the folks, um, at the Health Trust, um, on the eighteenth. And, um. You know, give an opportunity for people to ask questions and, um, provide answers to them. Uh, Morris Arboretum, uh, most of you know that Morris Arboretum has, uh, Bloomfield Farm in the township. And that's basically their, um. They're growing operations in the maintenance, um, facility, um, over here. They're very good, uh, to us. They allow us to have our VCO post site over there, so we like to cooperate with them as much as possible. On, uh, the third, uh, Mark and I met with them, Mark Panical is our planning and zoning officer. Uh, the arboretum has plans to relocate their propagation operations, which is where they, um, grow the trees, uh, from seed. Um, and, um, they're going to move it from the public garden side over to the Bloomfield Farm side. They want to free up some space for additional gardens over on the, the Philadelphia side. Um, and this kind of actually makes more sense to have it over, uh, with the other growing operation. On, uh, the township side. So they're in the planning and feasibility stages now. They might be calling Tony in a few, never know. Um, uh, but they'll be back in front of us with a land development plan at some point in the future.
Would that mean new employees and attached it?
Potentially. Could. Um, Carson Valley, um, on October seventeenth, I let everybody know that the schoolhouse property is officially on the market for sale. Um, as of last Thursday, um, they had not received any, uh, viable offers, offers. So it still remained an active listing. Um, the trust has assumed ownership or, I guess, oversight of the property once again. And, um, they're attending to some deferred maintenance activities that, um. You know, kind of lingering out there when BHMC was involved. So they're making plans to do all that. Somewhat related, I heard.
What does that mean that there's no advertised price?
They don't have a price listed on there.
So like, for fire. They decided like an NDA to get a price?
I think they have an appraisal that they've done, so they have an idea of what the value is, uh, but they're not marketing it with a number. They're looking to see.
Best offer.
What the best offer is. Yeah, so I think that the trust did buy it at some point.
Right.
Uh, but it was not part of the original.
Right, not part of the original.
But then wasn't the decision made in a, for. You know, they didn't accept. Most of them.
I think that that applies to the schoolhouse.
Yeah.
I think that that applied to the schoolhouse. Because that's all that they were really going in for at that time.
Right, separate from.
Separate from the, the larger part, because they didn't have control of that at that time. But, um. Oh, yeah. The trust, yeah, you kind of got rid of the other. Although PHMC recently raised the issue that they feel like they should be a beneficiary from any trust process. Which. They'll probably argue, uh, yeah, they'll probably argue about that a little bit.
Mike, can I just ask, when, um, in any of your conversations? Did they give a timeline around some of these repairs, just because it's kind of been a lot of games offered?
Well, so they had to, they, they secured a property manager who's on site pretty frequently. Um, and that person goes down and they secure quotes for making them. Um, and that person goes down and they secure quotes for making them prepared. So that's been part of what's been going. Uh, I know that they have some sidewalk blocks along the frontage on that line plate that they're gonna get taken care of pretty soon. They're gonna go for, you know, weather turns, people. Um, and I know they've been working to clear out just a lot of junk and sordid and the trees are, I mean.
Trees, yeah.
It's extremely expensive.
Yeah.
Is there an liquidity issue? I mean, do they, do you mean they should need to sell this property?
No.
No.
But they have, uh, you know, the the trust, they have pretty good funding level, but I think that they need to go to Orphan's Court to get approval to spend the money on the maintenance of the property. Because that was not how it was originally set up. That they have to pay, they were, they were to provide, um, it's like, if I pull it to the educational institution, it was then gonna be charged with the maintenance of everything. That's a little bit backward, right? And more to come. Uh, deer population, so, um, a couple of the commissioners had heard from some of their constituents. Um, and there was also some folks who came out to an environmental advisory committee mission, um, meeting. Um, sort of like making the, I guess, an argument for conducting a deer management program or even a a cull of the herd. Um, there's things you can and can't do in that regard, things you may want to consider, um, whether you're gonna get involved in that. Um, one of our biggest challenges is all of the properties that that we have are so small and they're in such close proximity to residential properties. Um, I don't know how you conduct, you know, even a sharpshooting thing, uh, without running afoul of the state Dean Commission laws. Um, and that's not to say that there's a lot of people in town, I think, that like the deer and don't want to see the deer get killed off. But nevertheless, um, coincidentally, one of our summer seasonal employees who's a senior at West Chester University and he's a public health major, um, with environmental health ma- minor. And he needs to do an internship at a capstone project for next year. Uh, so one of the things I kind of, he he asked me if there anything I could do with the township. I said, well, you know what, there's this deer thing going on here, like, you know, why don't you try and put a proposal together to see if you can make it work with, you know, your advisor and, uh, you know, we'll work with you. Maybe, you know, it it benefits us. And he knows the town very well. He knows some of the issues we're up against. Um, so, um, if you're okay with it, I'd like to pursue a little bit further with them and, um, get some data and maybe get some, you know, recommendations that come out. But he he said he'd do some surveys and that type of thing, so.
Yeah, not with any of that project, I should add, but this is ongoing conversation. Quite a lot of, have lengths about some of those restrictive in conditions, how many feet, how many meters, that sort of thing that you, so that's a very. If you can do it, not withstanding, uh, whether people wish to go out at all, at the fall, but they're gonna go easy on that. So lots of similarities to have, so I think we, um, not follow them at that year, since we're not on a record show. But you can make it fully ready.
Mike, do you know the migratory patterns of deer?
I do not.
No, but I was just, I was wondering, uh, if, uh, you know, i- if you poll in, uh, for Washington State Park or Melissa Hickin, if that would have an impact on the neighborhoods, because I do.
Well, friends, it wasn't making, you know, so. So the one, yeah, or office. So where where I am in New York, certainly, um, that's really the path, I'm assuming path of the year. Uh, it's, uh, we do have a man, uh, so it's, like, that they have a stand in there. So another layer of, kind of, falling that we would offer, what do you think, if they fall, without the, that's what it's called.
Yeah, it was two, um, with the, uh, before the USDA would get the, uh, sharpshooters in, you have to have an established program going on two years. But most of the other municipalities are doing it on their, on their park property or township-owned property. The challenge here is where the deer are mainly highly populated is private property.
I'm sorry, yeah, that's similar, uh, we're aware. My thought, and some common topic, as, you know, for that. There is an angle, uh, and especially we had a value, a piece of value.
Oh, he brought that up already, yeah, he's, he's over it.
And he'll look into like, like introducing wolves or like other, maybe, you know, have them, you know, like introduce another population.
You never know whether to take him seriously, Dave, whether he's one of the worst coyotes, maybe.
I've got my seventeen-pound dog chasing twelve-point fox out of my backyard. You just let her, you let her roam, take care of this. But I guess. Yeah. With the intern, it would be exploring, like, not just the feasibility of a call, but of, like, various alternatives to to managing.
Everything's on the pitch.
Everything will be on the table.
Yep. And then, and then I think my second thing too was to, um, to maybe provide some sort of response about, yeah, because I think people are aware that there are deer calls in in some of our neighboring townships. And I think they wonder why we can't do it. And I, you know, a lot of it has to do with the fact that our neighboring townships have large parks where these probably take place that, you know, are probably three and four times the size of our largest park. Um, so. Right. So I think maybe just, you know, where we can put together something that just draws the clarification between fire challenges versus Cheltenham versus Upper Darby versus Lake Marsh. And whatever programs they have and why they're possible there versus not possible here.
I'm also, we have a pitch, kind of, couple, I think, if you make us, you know, we tell the website about here, the things that we are, I don't think you do, put the doors, like, full in the email, we kind of put it out there.
And we do have some information out there already, too.
And then, we can say, but we're continuing to work on alternatives. So it's not a, not a dead issue by any stretch.
Wolves. Male wolves. Lichens.
Moving right along, Walnut Avenue Master Plan. Um, you are teed up to have a presentation by Port Architecture and Urbanism for the Walnut Avenue Master Plan at your December eighth workshop meeting. If you're good with that. Um, that's what they're planning for. So. Zoning Hearing Board, Ed Fox has confirmed that it's his intention to, uh, serve through his current term, which will expire on the thirty-first of December, um, and will decline any invitation to be reappointed. So, uh, you'll have a vacancy presumably as an alternate if you choose to move Mr. Davy up to a voting member, which is normal protocol. Um, so you can make a decision as to whether you want to announce that vac- anticipated vacancy this month. Um, if these are kind of. We're most likely in all. He has, uh, I would assume that he, he participated very actively, um, um, at some meeting I attended this month. It's good. Good questions.
And also the associate.
Yeah, he's gonna stick around for that, I think. That doesn't have quite as heavy a look on a regular basis. A lot.
Lot, yeah.
Two thousand one, as I was only hearing.
Yeah.
Before that, it was open space and plenty. Um, then just a couple of personnel notes. Um, um, sadly, um, we all know that Emily Byano, our Director of Forest and Recreation, um, has accepted a new role that's gonna allow her to have more time with her family. Um, you know, got eighteen-month-old at home and her day starts very, very early in the morning just to get out here. She lives out in Chester County and childcare and everything else, it's just, you know, on a good day, she's got a long day, let alone when we have night meetings and things of that nature, so. Um, she's agreed to help out, um, through the transition and, uh, we're already out on the street, uh, with her help, um, recruiting and, um, trying to attract a new person to the position. Um, her last day's gonna be on Wednesday. Uh, we have a little lunch scheduled for her if you want to stop out. Something fancy pizza. Um, what else?
Um, and Mike, I'm sure you'll do it. And, and Emily's been fantastic and it is a very difficult job because it's probably the most public-facing township role. Uh, but to that end, um, you know, it is the most public-facing township role that, you know, that lets you interact with your parents and, uh, under tough circumstances and stuff with your kids, so.
Hundred percent.
It's a, it's a tough one to build.
Yep, and I I would not, well, I would suspect that some of that has to do with Emily's decision to get out of Forest and Recreation, you know, at a municipal level altogether. She wouldn't say that necessarily, but sure that plays into it a little bit. Um, a couple of new hires, uh, Jennifer McMonicle, she lived in Flower Town, um, Ward Six. Um, she was, um, hired as a Public Works Administrative Assistant that will be naked for a few months, um, due to the retirement of our previous admin assistant. Um, she's gonna start on the seventeenth. Uh, in addition, we have, uh, hired two new Public Works laborers, uh, Ezra Follman of Cheltenham, started yesterday. Uh, actually, no, today, today's Monday, started today. And Chuck McFoy of Philadelphia, um, he's gonna start next week. Uh, both of those gentlemen are part-time employees in Addington Township Public Works Department at the moment and, um, look to be a good addition. Um, also, one of our long-term administrative assistants in the code enforcement department is going to retire in January. Um, Robin's been around since May of nineteen ninety-three in that department, so she's got a lot of institutional knowledge. So, uh, we have an internal job posting right now. Um, and I suspect that one of our existing employees is gonna put in for that position and I'd like her to start working with Robin for the end of the year so that she can get to learn some things, since we have the opportunity. And then we'll be putting down for another job.
Not the other thought, I just have thought, like, I don't know what kind of difference, but, um, I'll stay, apparently, so having other people to make the, uh, best decision.
We've done that in the past, and the problem with that is people really aren't as invested as a time employee. You know, there's a lot of callouts and they don't get paid when they're not in. Um, you know, the incentive is to work to get paid. Um, but we need them, you know, um, and it's tough with all those roles.
I'm going to ask, it has this, a pool of talent available in the town.
I've actually asked that question many times, you know, of our office staff. Um, we we had tried it as recently as when we hired Danny, um, to fill that role back in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty. And really didn't get the response that we were hoping for.
I have one question.
Sure.
Uh, can you give us an update on the, uh, with the solar plan for the township?
Sure, uh, we, the agreements have all been signed. We have the the performance and payment bonds from the, um, contractor. Um, I believe they have fourteen Bs to submit their, um, design to PICO.
Okay.
For approval.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, then they're gonna be, they're gonna be working with our consultants, um, on, um, some of the more technical issues that, you know, get involved.
Okay.
That's moving forward.
Okay, so timeline should be spring start or?
Where our hope is.
Yeah, okay.
That, and the actual install and and it's only like a month.
Yeah, it's pretty quick, once again, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. I I had, I had, I had two questions, very quick questions, and they were actually, um, they were on the the bill reconciliation, uh, page for last month on page three of four. I wish, I don't, I can't remember, Springfield Township Fire Relief Association. What what is that?
That's the Firefighters Relief Association, um, so they.
Makes sense, but what is it again?
It's all the the fire company members and they basically use the funds to, um, to buy insurance, life insurance for the members. Uh, we get the aid, it's a, it's an in and out. We get the aid and that exact amount from the state.
Okay.
And then we give it right back out to them.
Okay, okay, great. And the other one was, um, on, on the, uh, the same reconcili- reconciliation, uh, report, October. The last item, uh, was Quick Lot LLC. Quick Lot LLC for twenty-one thousand bucks. What was that?
Lot LLC.
Twenty-one thousand.
Even online gambling?
Yeah.
It's still game?
Um, line painting.
Oh, that's right. Oh, line painting, okay, okay, great, okay, thank you. That's it.
Yeah, so, but there it is. Uh, so it's, tonight is, uh, so Wednesday would be the budget presentation and then on December tenth, you would have a budget hearing. And if all goes as planned on that same evening, you would have a budget adoption so that we can keep the lights on as of one one. Um, that'll be an announcement that John will make on Wednesday.
Mike.
Yes, sir.
Just hi- historically, just because it's been a couple of years since we've had a tax increase. Historically in all your years, when that happens, do certain members of the, uh, community come out for that? Express any, or did you usually kind of, quiet?
Um. It can vary. I mean, years ago, we had a couple of, uh, very regular attendees, um, to the budget meeting, um, but in more recent years, very few. But, I mean, you know, public meeting and now we're big described here.
Just, it's, it has been a couple of years, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
Past.
Yeah, no, it's difficult budget. I'll, I'll be honest, um. Yes. Yes. Yep, so a couple of the things that that we did, so on the revenue side, uh, the opening balance was adjusted very modestly by about two, twenty-six hundred dollars. Uh, real estate tax receipts went went down because we lowered the miller rate, um, by about hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. By doing so, you also reduce your real estate tax discount, um, by thirty-seven hundred dollars, which is two percent if you pay early. We factor that in, if you can, you take advantage of that. Uh, real estate transfer tax, this, again, this is all on the revenue side. Uh, we increased the real estate transfer tax by twenty-five thousand dollars based upon, um, the historical receipts that we've been receiving and based upon our year-to-date, we have another month's worth of receipts and felt comfortable bumping it up that amount. Um, the commission for the real estate transfer obviously goes up as a result of that as well. Uh, earned income tax, we raised that by seventy-five thousand. We had talked about as much as a hundred thousand, but after I got the news that Upper Darby was gonna be enacting that earned income tax, I didn't feel as comfortable, um, pushing that envelope to a hundred thousand. So, um, that's still a seventy-five thousand dollar bump, which which is helpful. Uh, we also took a look at the, um, sale of some of our very used equipment that we plan on getting rid of, specifically two, uh, Ford Explorer police cars and, uh, there's a, uh, a dump truck that we look to replace and and we think we can get a little bit more money. We usually are pretty conservative because you all know, you know, like, somebody has to be in the market for buying one of those vehicles on the auction site. Um, at the time. At the time that we listed, so we. Conservatives still, but we bumped that up by sixty-five hundred hours. For the, the equipment that we plan to sell next year that will be replaced. Then on the expense side, the earned income tax collection went up by nine hundred hours again because you're increasing your revenues by seventy-five thousand. The collection expense is going to go up. They could be based upon the percentage that they bring in. Medical insurance, there's a twenty-eight thousand dollar savings there for, again, just the salaried, non-represented individuals are going to go to the high deductible plan. That's, again, keep in mind, that's only three quarters of the year. It would be more if we would implement one-one. And in ensuing years, if we are able to negotiate that same change with the police and public works, you'll see even bigger. Decreases. So, because again, that's where most of the bodies are, you know, there's thirty police and there's thirty public works. So that's where the big numbers are. And then capital expenses, we reduced those by about eighty-two thousand dollars. So. Yeah, one of, one of the highway dump trucks, we were funding, I think eighty-seven thousand dollars worth of that and we, we reduced that down to one half. Of the cost and that's just that for a two-year period and. What else did I? Think there was some fencing at one of the parks that we're going to defer. And that parent-child swing that we were going to buy next year, I think we have enough money to buy that this year. We're going to get that installed this year. Just adjusted the amount of money that we put aside to do some interior painting upkeep in the municipal buildings, reduce that. There was a snow plow that we were going to buy as well and the fleet supervisors said, again, we can defer that for another year, the plow that we have. You know, it'll last. We just have to think about its replacement eventually. That's where the, the bulk of the changes. And your. Materials tonight, there's a short little PowerPoint presentation that Craig put together. That we can go through on Wednesday if you like. We're certainly will post it to the website. Just tries to highlight where the expenses are and why. Public safety wages and equipment, fire protection, employee wages, insurances, library services, parks and recreation expenditures and heavy maintenance activities. There, where the bulk of our increases are in the, the budget. So there was a, there was, I think the request was, how do we compare with some of our neighbors in terms of our business and mercantile tax collections? And why that. Why our relatively small business community doesn't provide us this rate of relief as some of the other communities around us? In which case we have to like transfer that over to the real estate tax. So I, I talked to the Business Privilege and Mercantile Tax Collector and he was able to give me three years' worth of. Receipts for Concha Hocken, White Marsh and Plymouth. Plymouth is very comparable to us in terms of population. And the services that are provided, they have a very comparable sized police department in states. But just, they also have a mall, right? So Concha Hocken in twenty-twenty, I'll start with alphabetical ordering, twenty-twenty-four. Concha Hocken brought in four point two million dollars in Business Privilege and Mercantile Tax. That's a small dollar. White Marsh brought in three point four million. Plymouth brought in eight point two million. We brought in one point two million. Right? So like, we, we live in a bedroom community, you know, most of the town was built and developed as residential, like we, we don't have the big. Commercial areas in which to bring in the Business Privilege and Mercantile Tax. That's also transfers into the, you know, the assessed value of the, the community as well, you know, the commercial properties are generally assessed higher than. Ours are. We also have a lot of non-taxable properties in town, you know, it's. Great in some respects that we have the Mount and Sealy, LaSalle. You know, and everybody has churches and places like that, we have the USDA, but all, they're all tax exempt, so you don't get any real estate backed out of them. They're also tax exempt from Business Privilege and Mercantile Collection. They don't get anything out of there either, so. You're really, what you're really left with is earned income tax and real estate. Which we all.
And it, and it's, and not to reopen it at all, but it does make, you know, decisions like the, the laws debate. That much more complex because. Not, not to, not to suggest that forty-five units there would be good for the community, but weighing that. That, that cost-benefit analysis between, you know, intervening in, in development projects like that, not like cost of township money, but also then. Limit the scope of that project. You know, there, it definitely has a very long-term revenue impact. On the township and, you know, this is, this is a big, this is a big hike for. A lot of people in the community at a time when food prices are, I mean, all of the, all of their costs are up, PICO. Food, and it's get, people are getting killed on price increases and now a seven percent increase on. Real estate taxes. So it just, it is a consideration and it makes that analysis that we have when we, when we take up development issues or conservation issues. Needs to be part of that conversation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the Act five eleven taxes do the best job. I mean, they could be broken out a little further. But that's basically what the Business Privilege and Mercantile Tax are. That, that, that likely includes Business Privilege, Mercantile.
I do think it'd be exciting, Mike, if we could break records as a township in terms of speeding tickets. You know, we generated a million five speeding tickets and eclipsed every other township. That'd be, you know, that'd be newsworthy.
You're a hundred percent.
Don't mess, don't mess with Springfield. Don't drive through, don't, don't drive past.
No nonsense.
Yeah.
No nonsense policy. That was Lieutenant Thompson. Late three, Lieutenant Thompson. It's right next to the karate studio. It used to be, I mean, it's been many things in my lifetime. No, it was a hairstylist. And then I think that there was a. Spa in there for a very short period of time, but it's basically a duplex with a very small, really small, like four hundred, forty-two square foot office in the front. And the new owner of the property. Excuse me, claims that he's having trouble renting. That front space and would like to turn it into an efficiency apartment. Problem is, he's already a non-conforming structure with regoing through the, a lot area for the duplex and that's to add another residential use into there, so. Terms of parking, it's a wash, but in terms of a lot area, he's, he's definitely going to be. Hopefully short. So, yeah, the, in two thousand and twenty, the township took out a, an environmental pollution. Insurance policy to kind of guard against the cleanup costs for the property. We thought we had a pretty good idea of what we were getting into when we took the property by any, the, the, me. After talking to the EPA, which had conducted a cleanup on the property. But we're still, you know, it was actually our second insurance policy that we took out. Just in case we came across something that was unknown and we had a big claim. It, that policy also included third-party liability as well, case somebody got hurt or we, we had a claim there for that. So that policy expired on the thirty-first of October this year. And because we're so much further along with the, the site assessment. It was a recommendation of our, with our environmental engineer and environmental counsel that we probably don't need to. Look into the remediation coverage or the pollution coverage and instead just look to see if we can save ourselves some money by getting. Policy for third-party, you know, bodily injury and property damage claims only. But basically bare bones, the pollution migrates off-site into another property and be covered up to a certain number. We do have an existing claim against the insurance we have now for the benzene that was giving us a hard leg with fifty DDP as part of our remediation claim. That's already been all grandfathered in, like it's an active claim. It's still ongoing. We're nowhere near our li, our deductible now. So, you know, it's, it's already documented, it's in there and we'll. Annate to our environmental attorney, so we're, we're covered if there's any additional benzene, like that's all taken care of. You don't have to worry about that. But if you, if you think it's a, a good idea, we went out and we, we secured proposals from. Oh, we tried to get a proposal from our current carrier, but they're no longer in the environmental liability, environmental insurance industry, so they declined to quote it. But we got proposals from Beasley and Distinguished. Now, again, there's not a whole lot of people that write this public, they're surplus lines insurers, kind of like dealing with like a little bit wanted, like big sure. The Beasley quote or proposal had a lot of restrictions in it and we weren't able to get them to budge on that, but the distinguished one was pretty good. And we went back to them and said, all right, can you, can you give us some options to consider, you know, rather than, you know, a five-year policy with a five million dollars of coverage? Can you give us some options of a three-year policy, a five-year policy, a ten-year policy? With deductibles that range from fifty thousand to two hundred fifty thousand and coverages that range from three to five million. So not surprisingly, the most affordable coverage is one that's going to be for the shortest term with the highest deductible and the lower. Limits. I would say that in, in this case, the lower limit wouldn't necessarily scare me. Because sometimes if you have a whole lot of insurance, it comes in attractive claim today, but if you have lower, so I'm thinking if not as after trying. Do it for something. Also, I asked Aaron, like, you know, when would you expect us to suffer a claim? That we would, you know, submit and he said, you know, the insurers have generally taken the position that. When a, when a site is an active site, that's when it's more likely to generate some kind of a claim. But the longer time goes on and the further past any kind of construction activities or like public planning and things that you're, you're doing. You're less likely to get anybody to, you know, file a claim against you. So with that in mind, you know, maybe the, the three-year term is, is something to consider with a high deductible amount and the, and the lowest coverage. Just to make it an affordable decision. But, you know, like the options are all there for you.
There is one big difference. Or another, one additional big difference between a deductible which we had and what these are all proposing, which the SIR. Which is a self-insured retention and the, and the, the big difference is in, in a self-insured retention policy. The onus is on us to, to defend, to collect, to. To begin the underwriting for the loss, you know, it's not on the insurance company. So this. All of these programs are going to throw an additional burden on staff. Or some other entity that staff might want to hire in order to process this. I, I was involved for many, many years with my former company with insurance and SIRs. And they're really a pain in the ass, basically, you know. I would, I'd also recommend, because the premiums aren't that much different, in my opinion. I would, I would, I would agree that you might have the most exposure initially when you're doing all the work. But, but you don't, you don't want to get into a situation where you have a problem, you have a three-year policy and you have a problem. And, and then it is, it's unresolved and then it's much more difficult to get additional insurance for the extra couple of years. So I would, I would definitely say five years. My recommendation here for the money, I think the winner here is the third, the second one down, the, the. The, the five million and five million aggregate fifty, fifty thousand SIR for five years at forty-eight grand. That would, that of all these I looked at, this, that would be my recommendation for the board. Going forward, because you have to have this, you, you really have to have this policy. So this is a third party. So basically, it's, it, the story would be here. Two and a half years from now, three and a half years from now, everything's all done, the kids are playing on the, on the field. Mom comes in and, and my kid has cancer. Well, why did, why does your kid have cancer? Well, because she played on a field that had been a superfund site in your township. So that's, that's the kind of coverage you want to have. Uh, 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 for, for a policy, that, that's what it's, that's what's defending you here. That on the third-party policy, so. You gotta have it, I'd say, you know, five years is the right time and fifty thousand SIR just to. Just to take, take some of the owners off of staff or any other third party that they were going to have to hire to administer this, this policy, so. That's. My thoughts.
That's helpful, thank you. Mike, do you have a? Suggestion from staff after doing all these?
Again. Most of it came from the environmental attorney that we've been utilizing. And, you know, Pete, you bring up a good point that if we do have an active claim, will we be able to get insurance, you know, with that active claim? That's something we, we considered, but his recommendation was, again, strictly looking at foster, you know, again. Was to go with the, you know, the, the least costly one, which was the seventeen thousand dollars. Which provides three years of coverage, you know, with the thought that if there wasn't a plane and we've gotten the building demolished and we've gotten. That, like, say the soil spread around and you've gotten the, the loose framework of a park already, like, created. That you go out and you get coverage again and see, you know, what it looks like, because at that point, you know, you, you're hopefully not an active construction site. Because at that point, you know, you, you're hopefully not an active construction site, you're, you've gotten your act to, um, approvals from DEP. And it might look a little bit more attractive at that time. But Pete, you brought up some good points, you know, um, it's just a matter of where, where you.
Yeah, what level of, of risk, what level of risk do you want to undertake? And what level of, you know, financial, uh. You know, recourse do you want to get involved with?
Uh, of the years, the idea is that we want to satisfy this company, so we have always continued to satisfy all the demands of, uh, the DDP and, um, regulators.
This isn't protecting you against EDP, this is just third-party. This is some stranger coming onto your property and then getting cancer, you know, in three years and suing it.
Right, but if we're following all the recommendations, that mitigates.
No. No, I mean, it would assist in your defense, certainly, yes.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, oh, but that's not going to stop a, a jury from awarding a twenty-five million dollar suit.
Cause a wolf attack a kid, wolf attack a kid. I have some questions, but I, I think they better, they probably better serve the executive regarding this.
Uh, you have any other questions regarding times? All right, so I'm really going to have some questions, you are small, similar.
Yeah.
So we'll hold on to the recommendations. Do you have a fine frame on what we need to consider?
You're, I mean.
Oh, busy time. Uh, what we.
Well, the, the other recommendation I would make is that the carrier should be able to backdate their policy.
They will.
So that, okay, so there's no lapse in coverage, okay.
There won't be a lapse in coverage. Yeah, that's not a problem. But to your question, like, I don't think that they're going to do that if we don't make a decision this month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, generally, and it's true question.
So then tonight, or.
Right.
Um, okay, next thing, the second part is, I'm hearing you get into it. Okay, no question, if I could, I'd go.
Now, one thing to note, the, um, the value of single-stream recyclables continues to, um, drop, it's, it's more costly. Um, the, uh, we had a conference call with our recycling processor, uh, last week and, um, they're, they're going. Tires and, um, China's not taking as much of the material. Again, it's retaliatory because of the tariffs that we've imposed, so, um, there's sort of a plot. Yeah. Yeah. So.
Thank you for that. Uh, the last one, we don't know either, if I can. You know, that this is a combination for this, we, obviously helpful.
So what's super qualified? The, the applicant just appears to be super qualified, so.
Yeah, so Katie, Katie Clem, um, she's a member of your library advisory committee, um, it, it has found the need to resign her position. Uh, she actually had some health issues and, um, some professional, uh, career obligations. So she's going to step down, um, effective immediately. And, um, I looked through my files for any of the, uh, the volunteers that people have put their hand up. And, um, there's two people who specifically expressed interest in the library advisory committee. Um, one was from two thousand and twenty-two, one was from two thousand and twenty-three. Uh, but I'm happy to reach out to those folks if you want to invite them in and you want to meet with them. Um, one person wrote, I don't know, a three-page letter, um, seems very, very interested and the other one has a two-page resume. So, uh. Seemed to be pretty excited about the position.
Right.
Cool. Well, that sounds good. I only question that for the ultimate. For a presentation, I thought we talked about this, so, uh.
You wanted to push it off the dang where you can do that.
It's so intensive, it's a long review.
Dang where.
And then to have that, that's when we also have some ready to talk to you.
Yeah, so making an announcement for observing.
Let me do it all at once.
Okay.
For a kickoff. Well, I believe that the group is my floor, uh, we need. We do have to use executive items, it sounds like, or whatever the government has as experts. Uh, we're going to honor, uh, the, the association, I think, when you're around on, uh, these committees of us. And that's what we're going to do back then, so you're willing to. And what do we think have on that, that expedition?
Didn't say we were going to do it, do you think we were going to do it every meeting or?
You want to do it every meeting. I think it has to be a long, just, hey, what's been inspired at your, uh, assignments.
I'll start, we're keeping it brief. Okay, so for shade tree commission, um, a few things happened in the past month. The first was that we did a trial tree planting at Sandy Run Park. Um, we had concerns about the soil, um, there and what, uh, um, trees it might tolerate. So, um, a trial tree planting happened there, stay tuned. Um, a dogwood replanting happened, is that last weekend, two weekends ago, um, at Veterans? Um, so we've had some issues with dogwoods there, so also keep your eyes peeled and stay tuned to see how this dogwood, um, lives there. And then we're working on a longer-term plan for, um, a planting project that was originally scheduled for Sandy Run and we are now going to, um. Come back to the drawing board and pick a new park and talk about some spring planting that was supposed to happen in the fall and we plan to get, um, based, we want to see how some of these trials, so.
Uh, for me, the AC meeting, there was a presentation on the savings that we've gotten from the, the hybrid vehicles that the police have been using. Versus the internal combustion engines, that'd be bad. And I won't steal that thunder because I think that'll get incorporated into like a broader presentation that we have here periodically. About all the savings they've spent on, with all the, the different efforts that have been initiated by EAC and enacted by the board here. Um, there was, continue to talk about the year calling, um, and then also, um, talk about, uh, open space. There was a presentation here from Ben Schmanek, um, and looking for a little bit of response from the board. And, you know, we're currently in discussions, you know, about, uh, forming a subcommittee in the AC that will be focused in on open space. And trying to game plan for things like Carson Valley and everything else that we have here. Um, so, yeah, that's an ongoing situation and, um, you know, something that we're hoping to get concrete so that we can really take some, some, some active steps. There was also the, um, more movement on the gas, uh, lead blower. Um, I think there's going to be another demonstration, I think we continue to test that equipment to see the feasibility of, of putting it to work in the township.
Like a protest?
No, no, like testing it out. Oh, oh, yeah.
Not like a protest for against.
No, no, yeah, definitely, yeah, yeah. Just trying it out, you know, and seeing whether it can do the work that public works, these, these things do. And we had tried out some in the summer and, you know, there were some limitations, you know, I think, for example, uh, some of the things were overheating. Had to get put into a car with air conditioning to cool it down. So that's really defeating the purpose of, of, uh, moving to the electrical equipment. But all this stuff keeps getting better and better and I think we're trying other things and so we'll continue to push on that front. And on that front, um, Laura Marion is currently voting on a phased, uh, ban on gas-powered vehicles. And, uh, that, and it's coming up on November nineteenth, so just as a, a close by township. It would be something to be interesting to see whether the vote goes forward, how do they implement it, how does it work for them? And, uh, that's all this stuff will kind of influence our thinking and, and, you know.
And that's how they feel about, a number of times.
Yeah.
The fact that we're running through outright the, uh, gas and oil entirely there. In the past, we just glanced on the context and brought it up in a, in a. Through the open space, subcommittee, but I don't think your father would respond better because my suggestion would be that. If you continue to let this develop as a subcommittee and at the time you're just there, which that's how they develop some conditions, but consider it as with the company. It's kind of recommendations about the, well, and land dollars, very simple, and some of the, um, then that type of.
Bless you, bless you.
But that, that needs to be the formal response to them. It's more of us, like, what if we make this building house? But the channel has, that's building around.
Right, no, I think, yeah, I think, you know, we're, we're going to try and move ahead to form a subcommittee on the EAC and just try to frame what that looks like. Um, but then it's also like, what can we do? You know, we have the matching funds here, um, but, yeah, I think it, it still remains. Pretty quiet and, you know, not many people know about it, what can we do to, to publicize that, you know, will this subcommittee, you know, be a help in that, so. Yeah, it's just a lot of work that can be done because it's, it's a major issue, a major concern for everybody and, you know, just trying to find some tangible steps that take.
Would it be helpful if you, um, and, and again, these members, thanks to have President, so just to participate regarding the official numbers now. Do you think it's like, yeah, would it be helpful where we issue a call for interest in other positions? If you're interested in open space, please kind of, I guess it's part of that issuance.
Yeah, it's time to have the EAC meeting.
Well, it's not forming a new committee, so if there's anyone who's, uh, interested in it, especially front of valley, the public stage is happening.
So you're saying when we make an announcement for the hearing board this month, we put a little thing, uh, at the end. If you're interested in open space, attend the EAC meeting, I've been a little excited.
So we're doing that, but and you can do minor vibrations, you know. They're all talking about personnel, our community, it's all in place. And then that we can kind of do, you know, that's. No.
Pass.
Excited?
Pass.
Uh, I was away for both meetings, so nothing new. That I'm aware of.
They're continuing on the building.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
We've, you, you've not met since the last.
Uh, I, and we have a conference in the West and we had a very full room of fifteen plus individuals for a discussion by the skate park. Uh, team, we call it since nature, and he's a person who desires to promote, um, the, the skate park. They had two requests around yours, we, I'll go to the presentation made a while ago. And inspire the committee, who has really, really applied. So it's time to find something, see what's at, which, they may have no, uh, seen or experience that's been inspired. Uh, the history one, the student here, and so, and the board of commissioners, the best. That they have to raise half of, half a million dollars, then the board of commissioners will agree it. But in that interim time, they found themselves in a particular ancient area of, well, you can't raise money if you don't have a, a place. Um, so they raised some type of, so that was so far that they strongly think it's for that. Large bill. Um, so that was one request, uh, the other being in general, prioritize the, the bowl, so, um, blocks, the country, so, but, generally. Uh, the partners and committees, after looking at everyone's, uh, thoughts, that table those items until next month, they definitely, like, sort of, the way it's going. Um, what interesting at some of that, I think, you didn't find interesting, is that, as fire, who here would not want to suppress the weather and go. But, uh, we feel that's, like, somewhere in the township, and pretty much ninety-five percent of the hands were ready, they don't want to say anything. See everybody, it was a, a glorious hand raising for skate parks in the township, uh, which actually surprised me, um, because. Uh, so, and I found that, this is, um, and I think that's our best committee to store it, these, the committee members are kind of supportive. I think there's challenges at Royal Beach because it's a fascinating of homes, um, and others know the concerns. The safest concerns brought up were related actions of safety, um, as a deterrent. Uh, Royal Beach, where I guess presence already finds, but there's, there's other issues. Um, so for what it's worth, on the dramatic, I mean, it's been fact, still being there, so we've based on the studies that have been so many, well, there's. Such activity would actually help, uh, uh, allow something that, uh, do those, like, we see that, there's. So I think there's a lot of arguments there to consider, hence why I just thought that we need to cable it, because there's, I mean, much like they're also doing. For the concept, they still have somewhere in the concept, understanding the argument that. And if it should start, not to say, I mean, when they're doing. Uh, we also, and as, as Emily advised, uh, we discussed something that tends to make so careful. We, um, we've seen it perfectly here and I looked on the presentations, uh, in conflict, how we know that all the parts are changing to the, it was, um, in, excessive, all of these. Totally, I would say, all the concerns, strategies, visions, aspirations that run by town for all the parks, putting it in single document that we could, we really have. So, we're going to finally present on that, and it's about the construction, uh, you know, I mean, as I said, we've talked about, so there's some, so. But that's going to support the, I mean, that contains our general meetings, uh, executives, I think, public comment, if you have anything to say, you're welcome. We do have two executive sessions or executive items that we're requesting, uh, for the public meetings, and then you. Thank you.
Thanks for being here.